I'm Nick Armstrong and you're watching Dear Fort Collins, a podcast featuring the people that make Fort Collins a wonderful place to live. This series of episodes is all about the election that's happening in November 2025. And we're interviewing all of the different candidates for mayor, city council, and PSD school board. And we want to hear from them in their own words about why they're running, what they care about, and you then can be more informed about who you're voting for when it's time to fill out your ballot. With ranked choice voting, it's really difficult to know sometimes who your candidates are and what order you're going to rank them in. So I hope these series of episodes really help you figure out which candidates best align with your interests and needs. And as we do these interviews, I want you to know that I have given the candidates access to the questions in advance. I try to ask all of the candidates the same questions, or at least give them an opportunity to answer the same questions in the same kind of way. And there's very minimal editing on any of these episodes. So unless there was an errant sneeze or a cat jumping on someone's lap, you're hearing from the candidates in their own words. I do have a quick disclaimer to give you that I serve on the Parks and Recreation Board for the City of Fort Collins, and my opinions on this show are my own. They're not the position of the board or of the city. And I have also advised a number of the candidates about their campaigns, and in some cases have either helped with their campaigns or made a donation here or there. I do my absolute best to make sure that they all get fair treatment, that there aren't any favorites being played, and that also we're asking them the same types of questions, and they have an opportunity to answer those in kind. I hope that you enjoy these episodes and that they help you become a more informed voter in the upcoming election. And if you do have any questions, concerns, or comments, please let me know and reach out on the Dear Fort Collins website. I'm always happy to hear from you. And some of the questions that you'll hear me ask of the candidates have been submitted by listeners and watchers just like you, folks who are fans of the show and want to know more about particular candidates and their positions on particular things. So with that, let's get on with the show. On today's episode, we have Lance Smith, who is running for city council in District Three. Lance, welcome to the show.
Thank you. Good to be here.
What motivated you to run for city council?
Well, a few things. For one, I love our community, so I want to give back to our community however I can. Now that I'm working for another municipality, I do have the opportunity to run for city council. And because I like Fort Collins so much, I want to make sure that we meet our environmental sustainability, social, economic sustainability goals. That's one of the reasons I'm trying to run. Another is that I also want to see Fort Collins become a community where anyone living here can live and be a part of our community for their whole life if they want. And the reality is that today, that isn't really feasible for too many of our residents because of a lack of affordable and attainable housing and enough good-paying jobs. For another, I've had experience presenting to city council as a staff member. I'll get into it, but I've worked for the city for about 12 years as its utility finance director. And presenting to council is very much like I imagine being in a witness box. You're only there to answer the questions asked, and sometimes the questions that needed to be asked weren't asked. So I want to make sure those questions are asked. And lastly, we have some fiscal challenges that need to be addressed. I want to utilize my experience in long-term financial planning and fiscal management to serve our community well by assuring that any budget approved during what will hopefully be my tenure in city council would be one that efficiently utilizes our financial resources in a transparent and sustainable manner. You may have heard of the financial challenge that our city is facing, and you may have heard that those challenges are the result of macroeconomic forces. While there are some macroeconomic forces at work, much of our situation could have been avoided by making more realistic assumptions in our budgeting process and frankly, being more fiscally prudent than we have in our current budget. The 2526 budget was adopted with the expectation that we would reduce our cash reserves in the general fund down from $77 million at the end of 2023 to less than half of that by the end of 2026. That's going to pose real challenges for us going forward. And so I want to make sure that we're not fiscally, that I would say that's not fiscally responsible or sustainable in the next budget cycle. So I know I gave you a long answer there, but why I'm running is because I think there are some opportunities to change Fort Collins in some positive ways.
You know, it strikes me, I asked a budget guy to explain why he was excited about running, and you told me about the budget, which is great. Is that the focus for your candidacy? And is that, knowing that the city council can set their own priorities essentially, is that the issue that you'd like to tackle first if elected?
Well, that is the issue that I think we will be first confronted with because as you may know, we have a two-year budget cycle. And so the better part of 2026 will be spent developing the 2027, 2028 budget. And so, yes, I think that is certainly an issue that's going to be first and foremost. I would say this isn't necessarily the biggest reason I'm running. I mean, I do want, as I mentioned about affordable and attainable housing, I do recognize there are issues around housing in our community. And our community is one that loves nature, and we have lots of sustainability goals around that. So I think my experience as what was the utility finance director for over a decade will serve council well in addressing those issues.
So Lance, you've mentioned you want to move our progress forward on affordable housing. What are you looking to do and what levers do you think you'll have from city council to do that?
So I think just the fact that we're having that discussion kind of makes it clear that we are experiencing a housing crisis in Fort Collins. And the city has been trying to deal with this. Every five years, we do a five-year strategic housing plan. We've been doing that for about 25 years, which is to say that we've had a challenge for about 25 years, at least. And we, as the city and the county, have worked together to define our growth management area for the city of Fort Collins proper. We've had a growth management area that is a perimeter around the city for about 30 years. That has allowed the county and the city to both plan kind of necessary municipal services for residents. But what it means is that as we get closer and closer to build out, we're building out within a defined area, and we anticipate there to be 50,000 to 75,000 more people that move into that area. And so that's going to increase the density of our community. So we need to look at some solutions for housing that recognize that we have a significant amount of growing population. I think solutions that the council has already considered, they've made changes to land use code, they've had to walk back some of those changes. The state has made some changes for us. So we struggled as a community around U+2. The state kind of answered that solution for us. We need to work on streamlining our development review process. It sounds like a fairly simple solution, but it is a complicated task to do. The state has also given us some incentive to figure that out by the end of 2026. So streamlining development will help. We, as a community, have long thought that growth should pay its own way. And the easiest way to ensure that growth pays its own way is to have its own, pay its own way every step of the way. But I think we should be open to considering other ways that growth can pay its own way. For example, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving air quality by reducing traffic in town because new developments are built with multimodal transportation in mind or in transit-oriented districts will help us meet our sustainability goals. Policies resulting in housing that help us achieve other objectives, it would be nice to consider, you know, perhaps growth is paying for us, paying for itself in ways that are less tangible than paying impact fees. We have looked at trying to reduce impact fees, and I think that for certain housing, that's absolutely appropriate. I think all of the issues that we have on council are a bit intertwined, whether it's our sustainability goals, I talked about impacting greenhouse gas emissions by providing affordable housing in transit-oriented districts, for example. So I think, and we've also looking at policies resulting in more housing being built under modern building codes. So replacing existing housing with new housing is going to help reduce our emissions, but it's also going to allow us to have more dense housing in our communities, new communities.
Where do you see the city's role in advancing those sustainability and climate action goals with regard to also improving density? You talked about multimodal transit and development paying its own way. We've seen in District One that there have been some laggards in that space, whereas we have, you know, either super large developers coming in to do a large portion of the infrastructure build-out in that space, or you get the other side of it, which is the fees and other things like that for metro districts. And so to build out trails, parks, trees, all the rest of those things that we take for granted sort of as citizens of Fort Collins, that those things exist when we move into a neighborhood. When those metro districts don't exist, when you don't have a huge developer coming in, oftentimes those things like trails, bike lanes, sidewalks, et cetera, fall by the wayside as they have in District One, some of the other outreach areas of Fort Collins. So do you see that those goals for density, reducing fees, you know, improving the timeline, things like that, that go to help affordable housing, can be done at the same time as advancing the sustainability and climate action goals?
Yeah, so I think advancing our sustainability goals is certainly something that we need to do in parallel with trying to address our housing challenges. In my role as the utility finance director, I was responsible for making sure the utilities had adequate funding to support energy conservation, water conservation, solar rebates, programs like that that were being done within the utilities to try to meet our community's sustainability goals. We, as a community, and really part of PRPA's foreowner communities, decided we wanted to go to 100% renewable by 2030. And that's something that we, as a community, felt like we could afford. But internally, we recognize that not everyone in the community can necessarily afford to pay what would cost a bit more than our existing resources to achieve that goal. So my team and I worked hard to try to develop some income-qualified utility rates. The intention being that we want to, as a community, achieve these goals, but we didn't want anyone having to make a choice about, you know, putting food on the table or turning on the lights. So I think there are things that we can do to advance our sustainability goals, to help those in our community who are struggling with housing, or burdened with housing, I should say. And everyone lives in Fort Collins because they like Fort Collins, and a large part of Fort Collins is that ethos around sustainability.
Pairing that with the idea of diminished returns on sales tax investments and other things like that, and also that water is becoming even an issue, so Montawa is water limited in terms of being able to continue development or create development. Where do you see the city's ability to have those niceties and increase density while also approaching water and growth planning towards Fort Collins' future?
Right. Well, I think water is some of our most critical infrastructure going forward. It's essential for life. We live in a high desert, and we live in a high desert that experiences drought fairly often. So from a water perspective, the most crucial thing, I think, is the source of supply to begin with. We do, because of the way, some decisions that were made by city councils in the 1960s, we have three different water districts in the city. My district, District Three, is served by Fort Collins Loveland Water District. Fort Collins Loveland Water District is a participant, would be the largest participant of GLADE. That's a project that, just as a city's halligan project, went through an Army Corps permitting process, eventually did get permitted, but at this point, it's not clear exactly what it would cost to build that reservoir. And so Fort Collins Loveland Water District is exploring some other potential solutions. I think, as I said, water is essential for life. I'm a little bit concerned about the riskiness of relying on an aquifer that's filled up during, only during years of excess rainfall. And I think ultimately, while GLADE is going to be very expensive, I think it will be a cheaper solution than anything else that would provide that level of reliability. Interestingly enough, I would say a lot of the houses in District Three that are within city limits were built in developments in the last 20 or 30 years. Most of those developments satisfied the city of Fort Collins' water supply requirements. And that means that my community, for example, did that. So that means that my water supply actually comes from Halligan, and it wouldn't come from GLADE. And so in the past, I think the city council representatives from District Three have often kind of looked at city water and said, well, that's not me, that's not my area. Actually, it is us, and it is our area. And I think bringing that perspective to council would be good. You also asked about traffic. You know, I think, again, if we have a situation where people can live and work in Fort Collins, then the average commute will reduce. That will help our sustainability goals. That will also help our quality of life. It will reduce traffic on the roads, which I think is certainly an important thing to do. I'm not, to be honest, I don't know a ton about traffic, so that would be something I would have to just learn more about before really speaking on.
I like that as an approach from a city council person. I don't know about that, but I'm going to learn about it. I'm also hearing from you on a number of different of these questions, a more nuanced approach to facilitating solutions across multiple entities. So you mentioned the interactions between Laramore County and City of Fort Collins, which, you know, residents of District One know all about, because Country Club Road is our primary source of getting in and out of the city, and that's County Road. It's a really difficult thing to bypass, you can't really go around it. So I'm hearing that there's, there's not just a one-size-fits-all solution to any of these problems. I'm hearing that you're telling us we need to look at multiple different partners, we need to look across, you know, across political lines, we need to look across municipal-to-county lines to say things that are helpful for the larger community will then help us as a city. Is that accurate?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I think, I mean, we are, we are a part of a larger community, the whole county, the whole state. And certainly, we need to work with them where we can and understand that, you know, Fort Collins is a large part of the county. The county wants to help Fort Collins, so we can work together on solutions. The water districts have in the past worked together, they can work together on solutions. And so, yes, I do think working, and you said across party lines, I mean, one thing I would say about my campaign is that I'm not, I'm not accepting any donations. I'm also not looking for any political endorsements. The political endorsements in particular, I don't see city council as being a political position. I see it as being a community thing. We're concerned about our neighbors, we're concerned about our quality of life. Whatever party my neighbor is a part of, political party my neighbor's a part of, is largely irrelevant to solving our community's problems. And so I am trying to work with everyone in the community, and I want to hear from everyone, regardless of your political alliance, because we need to find solutions together.
As you know, city council is an unpartisan position. I love hearing that parties not playing a role in your candidacy. What role, shifting gears slightly, what role do you think that the city should play in supporting the arts, and especially programs and organizations that aren't part of official city initiatives such as Fort Fund or Art in Public Places?
Right. Well, I think the city, the city certainly should be trying to support its arts and culture economy and the members of our community that are artists. So the city does do that through a few things like Art in Public Places directly and through some grants that it gives, but it also supports it by having a vibrant community that appreciates art. And so I do think that it is important for the city to support arts however it can, whether that's at city facilities or it's at private, you know, Boz Blue Theater or what have you. So I do think the city needs to recognize that our artists are a vital part of our community, and I think the city does, but I do think that's the role of the city.
So talking about our vibrant community, can you share with me your understanding of the needs of the LGBTQIA+ community and what actions you can commit to in order to ensure the safety and inclusion of that community?
Yeah, so I think, you know, we all want to feel respected, we all want to feel accepted in our community. And those members of our community who are in the LGBTQIA+ community are certainly wanting to feel that as well. I think they're also wanting to feel safe in our community, and that's not something that we all have to necessarily think about, but these members of our community do. I think trans and non-binary students, residents, for example, maybe experienced bullying, maybe do not feel safe in our community. And so while we, as a community, are generally accepting, we need to understand that there are still challenges, and these members in our community need our support. There are some local organizations like PFLAG and Splash that are critical in providing some of that support, reducing isolation and enriching the social connections. But I think there are still opportunities where the city and the community can do better. But it does start with all of our residents, including those LGBTQIA+ citizens feeling respected and fully accepted by the whole community.
Lance, how do you view the city's responsibility in addressing homelessness and the mental health challenges that we've seen?
Well, I think first, as we talked about the LGBTQIA+ members, it's important to understand that our residents experiencing homelessness also deserve respect and to be seen as members of our community. Homelessness and mental health are kind of complex challenges. I would say on homelessness, the city of Fort Collins has seen its role as being more of a connector, providing, you know, connecting residents experiencing homelessness with resources in the community that can help them in that moment. I like this approach because it kind of recognizes that even at a local government level, government doesn't always know how best to address, you know, some issues facing its residents, and that there are people in our community who are better prepared to do that. This isn't to say that the city doesn't have a role and can't directly help those residents in some way. The city does have shelter plans that it implements, kind of an emergency weather shelter plan and a heat response plan for emergency weather events. The city does primarily provide some funding. It budgeted about $1 million for homelessness response and related services in 2025. It also budgeted money for HOPE, the homeless outreach and proactive engagement program. What I can see is that Fort Collins is budgeting some money for those nonprofit partners to provide direct services. But I feel like as long as we have members in our community experiencing homelessness, there is always more that a community like ours can do. Mental health, another big issue in our community, as it is in many. Like mental health, or like homelessness, I should say, mental health is a challenge that the city sees its role as a collaborator more than providing, directly providing services. Fortunately, our community and the county as a whole saw the need for a new mental health facility a few years ago, so we do have some more resources here in town. I think the city police department has a co-responder program now to try to help those in need of some type of mental, who may be experiencing a mental health crisis, get treatment rather than find themselves behind bars. And as a council member, I would, I would be looking, just as I am with the LGBTQIA+ member community, to reach out to those in the community to help teach me about the challenges and opportunities we have to help those residents, so.
So this is our first major election using ranked choice voting. How do you plan to appeal to voters who might not choose you as their first choice in District Three?
What I would say there is, I'm interested in hearing from everyone in District Three, their concerns, their issues, and their ideas for how we might address those. And so I'm asking them to consider me as their first choice. If they don't necessarily consider me as their first choice, because we do have ranked voting, and I think ranked voting is unique in that, you know, a cynical voter in the past would say, well, I'm choosing the lesser of two evils here. I think ranked voting allows us to choose the best and the next best of, you know, three or more candidates. So I think it gives everyone an opportunity to say, well, this is my preferred candidate, but if for some reason that candidate isn't going to win, then here would be my next choice. And I think that's a great opportunity that I look forward to seeing how that plays out.
Are there any voter groups or views that you're intentionally not seeking the quarter be associated with?
No, I mean, I'm interested in serving the whole community. I'm not always going to agree with everyone, but I don't, I do, I don't believe a civil servant should be intentionally not associating with anybody. So, yes.
Talked a lot about your experience working for the city, working for another municipality, understanding that you have understanding that you have experience in utilities. What does Fort Collins mean to you personally?
Well, so Fort Collins is my home first and foremost. I've lived here longer than I've lived in any other community in my life. And there's lots of reasons I've lived here for the last 15 years. The tranquility of Fort Collins, its nature, its arts and theater, our downtown, our music scene. But most of all, it's the sense of community that I have here, felt in Fort Collins. That sense of community comes from kind, caring, giving residents throughout our community. And so I feel like I belong in this community. I've lived here in Fort Collins 15 years, but I'm much older than 15, which means I've lived in a lot of other places in my life. So it's nice to finally have a place that I feel is my community.
What would voters be surprised to learn about you?
Well, they might be surprised to learn that I went to New Mexico School of Mines. I studied astrophysics there. Or they might be surprised to learn that I'm an avid woodworker.
Have a hard time choosing between astrophysics and woodworking and decided on city council?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we make choices as we go through life. I had a strong interest in science throughout school. And so I pursued that through undergraduate school. Then I got a master's degree in math. That kind of took me into the business world, into finance. And I worked at, you know, in front of a computer all day. And I felt the need to have something more tangible, so I took up woodworking. I bought a lot of hand tools, hand planes and whatnot. I never took shop in high school, so I didn't really know what I was doing. And about 20 years ago, I took a nine-month sabbatical. I moved to Maine, went to a center for furniture craftsmanship. And I basically had a nine-month apprenticeship to learn how to make furniture. At the time, I thought I was going to make a living making furniture, but that's very difficult to do. I came back. I have two kids. I had some responsibilities. And so I got back into the finance world. But I did get into municipal utilities. And that introduced me to kind of local government. And so I think every city employee at some times says, well, it would be nice if I were sitting on city council. I think I could offer something if I were on city council. And so I have that opportunity. And so I'm asking for folks' support to let me do that.
Deeply envious of your ability in woodworking. I think it's such a cool skill. And Nick Offerman, who's one of my favorite actors, author, has a book out called Good Clean Fun. He's also a woodworker, very much in that same vein. And NPR just released a great episode on their science podcast about the audio version of what the collision of two black holes sounds like as heard and interpreted by the laser infrometer. So that's, I would imagine that astrophysics is a lot of computer work.
Right, right. Indeed, it was, yeah. But now you're kind of asking me to show my age there because computers were not what they are today when I went to school.
Are you talking card punching? Is that the?
No, not quite card punching, but, you know, I did take, well, COBOL was a language you had to learn. Pascal was a language. C++ was coming about as I was graduating. So it was that level of programming, not kind of AI-assisted programming that we have today.
Yeah. Well, it's useful skills, I think, still to have because COBOL is a language that's in use across a lot of very important government systems. Very few people actually know how to do anything with it. So AI is not going to be much help there, I suspect. So you may be pressed into service as a programmer once again.
Well, we're through Y2K at least.
Oh, good. Along with that, if you could have any superpower to help your community, what would it be?
Well, I think what I would like is for you to be able to wave my hand and have all of my neighbors agree to listen to each other and repeat back to them what they've heard first. And I think that's important for us to really hear one another, particularly on issues that we don't necessarily agree on, and try to find common ground and common solutions.
Is there a role model in public service that you look to? And what have you learned from them?
Well, so I thought about that question. I would say that, you know, I thought, so President Obama, when he took office, he chose an issue, healthcare, and said, look, we need to address healthcare for all. He tried to work across party lines to address that. He stayed focused on that. And he was able to get some legislation passed that improved the lives of millions of Americans. And I think just his commitment to kind of seeing beyond party lines and just trying to work with others is something that I would like to do. I certainly don't have any political ambitions. I don't really consider city council to be a political position. But I did learn from him that community leadership, even at this level, of serving a single district in Fort Collins requires commitment to listening to everyone.
Yeah, one of seven is what I hear pretty frequently from those who are sitting on city council. And even though you are elected by your particular district, that you have to have considerations across the entire city to speak for all of our residents, those in, you know, District Two through Six. Of course, I was asking, as the person running for District One. So, yeah, you got to talk to all of people, which is, I think, a really sound piece of wisdom. Is there a piece of advice that you've received and you didn't follow and now you wish you had?
I think that piece of advice was to not wait until the perfect moment to do what you really want to do. That perfect moment may never come. And so it took me much of my life to kind of really understand that failure is one of the great learning tools. Advice comes along, but you have to be ready to let it sink in before it becomes actionable. And so I've spent the better part of a decade thinking I could better serve our community by being on city council rather than the day-to-day operations of a portion of our city. And so I'm asking for that opportunity.
What do you think Fort Collins will look like in 20 years from now?
Well, I mean, we talked about traffic. I don't know, 75% of the cars on the road today might not be on the road. We might be driving autonomous vehicles. I'm not really sure there.
I was hoping you weren't going to say we were all going to be stuck in traffic.
No, 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 I mean, we may have, may have traffic solutions that we haven't thought of. But I do think Fort Collins is at a bit of a crossroads today in that if we continue with business as usual, I think there will be some significant challenges. As I mentioned, we've kind of spent through our available cash reserves in the general fund. We've been working on affordable and attainable housing for 25 years. I think city council hasn't necessarily focused on accountability in a way that I think we need to. And so our community's kind of voice has been sidelined a bit. On the other hand, I think if we, as a community, decide to make a change with this election, then I think Fort Collins will look like a sustainable and resilient community where its citizens enjoy the quality of life largely that we have today.
So Lance, we've reached the portion of the interview where I'm going to ask you some rapid-fire questions. Whatever comes to mind first is just fine. Where is your favorite coffee shop?
I would say Wolverine's Farm Public House downtown.
Favorite brewery?
I can't really pick one. I mean, Odell's and New Belgium are diehards here in town.
Favorite park?
Twin Silos is across the street.
If you had to pick horse-tooth hike or pooter trail bike ride?
Well, I would like, I like a hike, so I would go up horse-tooth.
Favorite book?
That's generally kind of the last book I've read. But one I think I do read over again is Wherever You Go, There You Are.
Somebody's trying to get ahold of you. Do you prefer phone call, email or text?
I think email or text allows me a little bit of time to process it, but however, you can reach me.
Do you consider yourself an early bird or night owl?
I consider myself a night owl, yeah.
Do you have a favorite nonprofit in town?
I think Habitat for Humanity does phenomenal work.
Is there one, if you had to pick one word to describe Fort Collins, what would it be?
I would say tranquil. I talked about tranquility.
You answered this question maybe a little bit earlier, but if there was one thing you could snap your fingers and change about Fort Collins, what would it be?
Well, I think, like I said, I would like for our neighbors to listen to one another. And so active listening, I think, would be something I'd try to promote.
And if you weren't running for office, what would you be doing this year?
So I'd be doing either woodworking or looking through my telescope.
Good interests to have. Is there anything else you would like a listener to know about you or your campaign?
I would just, once again, want to say that, you know, city council is about our community, you and me, and solving our challenges together. Regardless of what's happening between the big political parties at the state and national level, we all have to live together right here and work together to make our community better. That's what I'm interested in doing. I'm not a politician. Honestly, I'm an introverted numbers guy who knows he has something to give back to his community by serving on city council. I think change is inevitable, so let's make some positive change together.
Excellent recap and reason to run for sure. Lance, where can we learn more about your campaign in particular?
So I have a website, all lowercase, lance smith four, the number four, foco.com.
Excellent. Well, Lance, thank you so much for joining me today on Dear Fort Collins. Did you have fun?
I did have fun. This is my first podcast ever, so I think that might show, but I did appreciate it.
It's fine. You know, these podcasts all exist to just share what's on our candidates' hearts and minds and share a little bit more about them in their own words. If you were sitting across from them having coffee, I think it's a really useful exercise. Because I know when I ran, I couldn't have coffee with everybody I wanted to have coffee with and certainly not everybody in the district. It was a tricky endeavor. So you go knock on as many doors as you can, but even then, you can only get so many. So I really appreciate your time and effort in being here. And we'll see you again next time on Dear Fort Collins.